With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This will get started and approve the minutes for April.
Make a motion to approve the bill in a second.
Okay. Approve the bills for last month in May. We did add a dump trailer this last month and a sewer pump service new pump.
Sewer new pump?
Yeah. For our water department, sewer department's looking pretty good.
Can you remind me why the internet inter mountain gas isn't red? Is that because we haven't got the bill?
Because I didn't have, don't have the bill in time for those earlier meetings. So I kind of guesstimated.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the bills for. Move this this night.
I'll set that up.
On the paper? Great. So we have a Zoom meeting with Text My Gov government. So look this. So that's basically about doing mass text to everybody in the city. Send out texts. Which we're finding that might be beneficial. So we're gonna find out.
I'm crooked for some reason and I don't know why.
You don't know why, Rob, you just won't say it.
Always a little.
Awesome. You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
I think we're good.
Good to go. Awesome. How's everyone doing this evening?
Good.
Good. We, I'm just down here in Logan East Hall. It's like finally getting some time maybe, so I've had that. Well, cool. Robin, I really just anticipated about seven to 10 minutes. If that works for you, I can even do a little bit shorter. Does everyone have that packet coming on my chat?
I didn't print the packet. I just figured you'd share your screen.
Okay, and that's fine. I can do that too. And I know this was briefly discussed previously. Is that right, Robin?
Yeah, we talked about it last month.
Okay, cool. So I guess kind of the concept of Text My Gov first and foremost. Started this just to help smaller communities and let everybody know what's going on today. So as I met with Robin and I know Brian and Jeff Johnson a minute ago too, we kind of discussed for you guys, it might be beneficial to send out general and emergency alerts, whether that's like a boil notice, maybe like a meeting, snowplows, low water pressure, that type of stuff. But then at the same time, the tool also allows for a little bit of two-way texting. So I'll go ahead and go through this a little bit here. What's the tool? It's really cool. So the outbound messages are just one-way. You know, if you guys send out either a water boil notice in effect, whether it's road closure or whatever, people won't be able to respond to that. But there is another part of the system where a resident can actually text in like, hey, how do I get a building application or how do I report a loose dock, right? And the system will actually automatically reply to them with the information they're looking for. Or contacts or whatever it is, right? The other benefit of the system is it also allows residents to report issues. So maybe someone sees the sign's fallen down or there's a pothole or a smoke violation. You guys kind of have control on the resident types of things that can actually report to you guys. You can even set it up. So it's kind of like a two-way chat function where a resident can text in chat, ask their question, and then drop in or whoever in the office there can actually respond back to them and answer back the text. So we found that really the tool is just really beneficial. A lot of people are using texting nowadays. Matter of fact, I think most people kind of prefer to text. So I'm just kind of trying to make it like a little bit easier for everybody. I'll go ahead and just open the floor a little bit for a second here. Does anyone have any questions on kind of how the system operates? How you guys can give messages out, how people can sign up?
Any questions?
I'm fine. I understand.
No questions.
No questions? Okay, cool. At Text My Gov, we really tried to make the signup process for official alerts just as easy as possible. So we actually provide you guys marketing material. We create like different flyers here. So some nearby cities that are working with us, city of Shelley, city of Yukon, sugar city of Ashken, Idaho, Shelby, Kedron, just things. So we provide everyone marketing, essentially it's as simple as the resident just text me an email. So for you guys, just a base up, right? And they would text that to a five-digit short phone number. And now it's gone from the off-line to the system up there. Another thing we can do is if you guys have a list of your customers' phone numbers and addresses, we can also easily integrate and import that into the system for you guys. So as you see here, there's the city of Shelley, they just kind of have one big group for everybody. They just shot everything. City of Yukon has a couple different groups. You guys can kind of set it up how you'd like. Usually I'll see a city start with one group. And then if you want to break it out based on the word type or apartment, you guys can totally do that all forward. Kind of moving on to the two-way side of things. These are just some examples. A lot of times I'll have agencies set up the program on our backend, which will help you guys with. To kind of set up all the frequently asked questions you guys have in the backend and then corresponding answers. So the most common questions I can think of, hey, what are the office hours? How do I apply for a permit? Or what's, how do I get one of the code information, right? Or even something as simple as like, hey, what events are coming up? Or what's ongoing with the checkup for next week, right? We can really kind of customize the program to you guys each there. Benefit of that is I think for smaller agencies, there's limited hands in the office and sometimes employees try to find information after hours. So if this is a 24/7 system, it'll automatically help your asking itself. To go along with that, the system can also take in reports, as I mentioned. So here's an example here on the right of like someone reporting a pothole. Essentially, we can make the system automatically ask a couple of questions in response. Like, hey, what's your nearest location? Give us a description or even upload a photo. And then it'll take all this information and send it off to the tech people or whoever receives that information to help develop the issue. The last part to the system is, it's a little newer to us, but we find that a lot of agencies typically, if you know, we get into a comprehensive plan or trying to apply for grants, sometimes getting citizen input is just a real problem. So we actually created a survey tool in here too. Where you can post, create, and also distribute your surveys. And it'll create also some custom graphics for you to help with your, 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 your resume. With that, that's kind of the system of the whole. I hope I went over it well enough for you all and your grasp of the concept. But again, I'll open up to you guys, what questions you guys have in mind?
Anybody have any questions?
Sure, sure. I don't have any questions.
No questions.
I think you've answered the ones we have, so. Because if we go over, we can go, we'll try to, we would, but if we look over our plan, we can add more text, right?
Yeah. Can you add a payment system part? I don't. That would be extremely convenient. So like, if we had a payment system, then yes, we could link it to it, right?
Yeah, yes. So you're saying if you guys had a payment system and someone asks how to pay their bill, if you can link to that?
Yeah, right now we just do check, cash, or money order.
Yeah, yeah. So we could currently set it up like, hey, if someone says, how do I pay my bill? We can give them those options and stuff to move forward. But if you had that payment system up, we could actually just link them directly to it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Another thing too, like if you guys have forms or applications or any documents you want to, you know, link that to, we can't upload those into Text My Gov and it'll provide them what they need for. Any questions?
Anything else?
I have no questions.
No questions.
Awesome. Well, that's it. I'll get out to you guys here and then we'll be busy. So I just appreciate you guys' time. And Robin, is it appropriate if I follow up to be tomorrow, Monday?
Yeah, let's do Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll give you a call then.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jayden.
Yep, thank you.
Can we open the door?
No.
Look if anybody else goes in. Funny one.
What, like we're not being private?
So what's the cost of this?
So if we want some of more of those premium package, packages, the range was like 1,500 to 2,500 average.
Month or year?
To do, a year.
Okay.
To do, um, kind of just basic text, it would be like 1,500. He added more text and then some of the premium features, like we can upload some of our ordinances that get asked about a lot. So if they typed in like dog, it would send them to, they can read that ordinance and what they are supposed to do. So that, the way he had it set up and what he talked about was about 2,000 a year.
Who wants a main purpose of the text message?
You know, one of the purposes is to communicate. Like last summer, we had like a drop in our water pressure. And we were told to let people know it wasn't really a boil order, but use caution until it came back okay. And there was a lot of confusion. So something like that, we could text out like, hey, there's a boil order or we've got a drop in pressure. We thought this is safe for now, whatever.
And they have a way that they can capture the whole city, not just those that signed up for it.
Yeah. So they can, through the postal service somehow, they can gather everybody's cell phone. Then you have an option to say stop by the office. Or they can opt to sign in themselves. So we'd probably put flyers out or whatever if we did it.
So yeah, on the emergency.
Or there's like, we're good, ready to go out and plow, like, maybe throw stuff out of the way? We could do that.
Yeah, those that are just like an emergency, like a boil, they just send everybody out, whether you sign them up or not. At that point, you could opt to get out of them.
So it's a way to communicate for a small little town instead of just posting something up in the post office.
And hope somebody goes over.
Yeah. But it does come with a cost. And.
It's a good way to remind people in the spring to clean their dish before it turns on. So there's not a lot of problems like we recently had, just stuff like that.
And it's linkable to the Facebook.
Yeah, so the next item is opening maybe a city base off Facebook page. Well, but I mean, it is part of the conversation. And we could just start with doing that.
No, if that helps. I'm all for, because not everybody goes to Facebook. I like Text My Gov. I'm all for it. I'm just going to be forward and put that out there because I do think that we need a way to communicate with all of our citizens. Right now, it's so hit and miss that we have no clue. Most people have no clue what's going on. And I love the idea of linking our ordinances so people can look it up. Because we are so little and we're only open those two days for those short. When people who don't, who are working and can't come in at those times, you know, maybe they can, them plan or do something different to, you know, maybe they can get it through the app to find out what they need to know.
I can also use it like if somebody's behind and I need to hear from them, I can send them a payment reminder.
And that way there's a record of it.
I like the idea a lot.
You can also put out the month, you know, the agenda, you know,
Yep.
like on Monday for Thursday.
Yeah.
Might get a few more people down here.
And that's also why we want to have a Facebook page too.
I think there's some community service projects we'd like to attempt to do. So we can use that to show what we're doing and invite people, things like that.
Well, I think it could make us feel like a community too instead of houses in a town.
There's a lot of people that do want to help out with community service stuff.
Well, they just know what's going on.
That's what I mean. I think the biggest thing is a more community feel.
And any texts that aren't used carry over.
Oh, nice.
So if you don't use them all, then you.
I like that. That's good to know.
Go on to your next year.
So I guess I'm voting for the premium package where we can put our ordinance in there because I really do like that idea.
Yeah.
So I motioned to do Text My Gov premium package with, we convert ordinance in there with it. And link it to our Facebook page that we haven't talked about yet.
I'm not totally sold on it. I think it's a lot of money for, um, apps that kind of do the same thing for free. Like, um, I think there's like, I mean, there's like the band app that the school uses for different things and that's free. And you can, it's unlimited on who, how many you can send out. That's an option. That's a free option. I'm just not sold on the, on the price of it, especially where the first year is, you're going to be your most expensive. I mean, if we did, if.
And it is a three-year contract.
Yeah, I remembered that. And I'm like, yeah, if maybe we had a pothole-free city and we didn't have a lot of other stuff that needs fixed, it might be worth doing. But at this point, I'm not sold on it just for the fact that I think we have other options. And we don't, actually don't even know how many people would use it.
Right.
So to jump in at that cost, I think it's not the smartest idea right now.
Question on the band app, does it allow you to put documents up there that everybody can access all the time, automated, so it automatically goes to that document?
Yep, you can search, you can, yeah. I mean, that's just one that I know of. I'm sure there's tons of other ones.
The school doesn't pay for that.
No, it's, and it's available to anybody. That's just, I know the school put that out there as an option for.
So do you have to download the band app to use it?
See, and there's people that have downloaded that app. They're not going to do it. And can we reach people who haven't, don't have the app?
I, I, I mean, it just goes through like a text message. So I don't know if you could just do it as a text. I don't know. I'll have to look.
Because I have been working at like collecting cell phone numbers that I can text in those kind of cases. But to do like a group mass text, then any response I get back, everybody on that group will see the response. So otherwise they have to go in individually, copy paste to each person that wants those texts.
Yeah.
So if we choose not to do this, we need to find a secure app like this that we can use because a lot of people are not going to.
And, and I mean, we could sit on it for a bit, right? And possibly start the Facebook page, see where that takes us. Like we can upload those ordinances and agenda and stuff like that there. Yes, people do have to go to it, but.
So in the meantime, how are we going to notify people of emergencies when they happen?
Well, in a real emergency, 911 will do that because they can geofence.
Oh, but I mean, what if our water drops low and we're supposed to do that?
Yeah, I mean, if it's a, but on something like that, I mean, dispatch will do that. But if you had a fire or something like that, 911 will geofence and do that. We're going to talk to, to Shelley and they talk to it?
Does it print out?
Did not do it.
For Shelley.
Just Shelley.
Shelley Icon and somewhere else north.
Yeah, Yukon.
Yeah. I don't know. I think we should just first find out. I mean, because you have, like if, I know we talked about, oh, we'll get in a notification if the power went out or whatever, but the power company does that. So I think we should find out how many people would be interested in it or even use it.
So you could put a survey up.
You could put it, you can put a survey. You could do that, yeah.
Next one.
Yeah, but I think before we just were like, yeah, that's a great idea. I mean, I, I like the idea of it. I just like the price of it. I don't know. I don't think it's a way to jump headfirst in.
And how do you feel about it, that versus a website?
I'm fine with the website.
Because the website will cost about the same.
Yeah, I don't. I don't, I don't, I guess you got to find your demographic of people. How are they going to, what would they prefer, like the general? I don't, I don't know. That's why I'm just like, I don't know if we ought to jump in headfirst with it first, like. I don't, that's just my thought. I just don't know. I mean, it doesn't do any good to pay for it and then three, four, so everybody opt out of it. Because they're like, oh, I don't, you know, I go, I get my, my neighbors or.
I think, I think we kind of need to look at, you know, see if there are other options and stuff. Like say to just.
Well, I look at like first website and it's really not updated very often. I mean, they do have their ordinances up there. So if people have questions, they can go there, but they have to go there where, I do think more people would text in, because it's right here, than going to the webpage, but.
I think you're right because I, human nature, people are not going to do it. They're just not. So people have their phone in their hand all the time. Most people in, I hate to say we don't skew that young here. And so most people are not going to go on Facebook?
Well, and will they even respond to the text? Like, I mean, it is.
So I mean, if we have something urgent we need to get out, we, we don't have to do Text My Gov. We need to find something that can still reach every single citizen because we can't have Brian going knocking on everybody's door.
It could.
Explaining what the neighbor said.
Because it's true. You find out, you come to the council and all these things have happened. You're like, uh, nobody told me.
Yeah.
And it's like, oh, well, we didn't get to your block. Well, gee, thanks. I'll just sit out here in the cold and not know what's going on. And I've had that happen.
So wouldn't we have to have a website anyway? Because if he says we, he would link our.
He can link like a Facebook page to it.
So we'd have to have something other than that to do to our ordinances?
Like I can text from the back door from the app and it'll post to Facebook and send out the text all in one.
But going on about the Facebook, I really think we do need a city of base up Facebook page.
Which doesn't cost anything.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Are there drawbacks to having a Facebook page that we're aware of? I, like, I had talked to somebody who is on a board and he just said they had one that was like an official page. And somebody tried to cause some problems because they didn't post regularly, like their agendas and stuff. And so if we missed one, like, are there laws that we?
You're not required to post it on Facebook, but if you're going to use it, yeah, you want to try and do those.
Yeah.
So why, why don't we do something like, something like.
If I happen to miss one or it was late, would I get in trouble?
Because you're not required to post it on your Facebook page. I mean, it's not like it's illegal, but you know, if you're, you know, if you're going to do it, do it. But if you make a mistake, it's not like it's the end of the world.
Yeah.
Can we say something like it's an unofficial page or something like that? Because they got I love it for.
Nobody will see that.
But somebody else runs that. It's not for. What's your opinion of the text? Mr. Old Man?
Old Man Cremen Jr.?
I don't know. It's, it's a lot of money.
How often do we have emergencies?
Right.
Exactly. For the most part, um, we got that bird that goes out and tells everybody what's going on. You can ask someone.
The fact that your wife giggles at that just says a lot.
You got something going on here and before you drive across town, they know about it.
Yeah. I've had all the same questions. They approached me and I'm bringing it to you.
I, I just think the money could be better spent right now on some other stuff. And, and by doing other stuff, that opens up other things that we get in line for grants and stuff because we're moving forward on, on stuff, not paying for it. We're actually doing something better.
Let's start with the Facebook page.
So for your minutes, just to be clear, so have more of a motion in there and it would die for lack of a second.
Right.
And you would probably want to do a motion to table it for further discussion once you.
How do I put the second name because it didn't?
It dies for lack of a second.
And so then what do I say?
So then you'd probably want to just have a motion to the tables, Text My Gov.
Let's, I motioned to table Text My Gov.
For further discussion down the road.
Further discussion down the road. Because we can't rely on somebody from one side of town telling people on the other. I guarantee you, there's plenty of people in this town who do not know what's.
We can, we can start a Facebook page and start collecting people's thoughts and ideas on that too. And see what people think.
What do these citizens think?
Well, the other big problem you're going to have is too many people aren't using online or text messages or anything.
Yeah, there's always that.
Yep, there is.
I mean, there are a few, but, yeah.
It's also a lot of money for.
A major.
A, a small town. You know, how well is it going to work if you could do something that doesn't cost anything and try that first before you?
A simple text system, I'm trying to remember who it was, was it My Meeting run by, who was it? Run by Verizon, whatever, is what we use to hold line of security. And we would just put, we've unloaded everybody's in the department there for each region and stuff and down to the city and stuff in there. We'd say, all right, Oakland, you know, there's a fire going on, blah, 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 plan on doing this. And everybody get text message, okay, and that was it. There was no texting back to it or anything else like that. It was just for emergencies to get something out there. to get something out there and but it was part of the bigger MyMeeting thing, which was a lot different. But there are the ones out, there are programs out there, or things that is, that are relatively cheap, if you're only doing like you know, ten texts, uh, a month, or even five texts a month, it's gonna be pretty cheap. And you're not, if you're not linking with anything else, that would probably work better. Because I know a lot of people that are older, don't wanna put apps on their phone. But a text, text is already on there. So it's like, it's like Amber would be, the bing, oh, okay. Doesn't apply to me, silly.
So what if you did something like, you broke up the city when it was zones? Like zone one, zone two, whatever, and you sent out pics?
Or that gets more extensive.
She just leaves, I think, in the cell phone.
In the city cellphone.
Yeah.
There should be a way in your cellphone, I do it as a coordinator.
So there is on Android systems. You can set it up so that nobody sees all the replies that come back. And not that I'd necessarily be trying to hide anything, it's just it can be annoying, cause I've done it for church stuff before.
It very well can.
When you're getting all these little emojis back and everybody gets it. So, but Apple doesn't seem to have anything that allows you to change that.
There should be a no reply option. That's all you need, just a no reply option.
I've never seen one, I've looked.
What's your opinion, Brian? You haven't spoken up.
I think we both are like, you can see the benefit, but-
I don't want my phone going off all night long, cause there's a pot going on.
You'd rather them come to your door.
I mean, they know where I live, they pound on my door anyway.
Sit walk in, whatever.
Walk in, yeah. So, I, I don't know.
Cost versus use.
Yeah, it's hard to know.
Two hundred dollars a month almost is a lot of money if you only use a text even twice a month, that's only twenty-four texts and that's, you know, that's two hundred dollars a month, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Let's try setting up a Facebook page.
Well-
Start with-
I think you have to finish with your-
Well, so you have a motion on table, you have a motion to table it.
Okay, all in favor?
Somebody has a second, like the-
She did, Brittany did.
Oh, that's right, I forgot she did.
And then all in favor?
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, we'll move on. Uh, resolutions for auctioning stuff.
No, we've gotta do Facebook. We've talked about it, so I feel like, no, what we're doing.
So I suppose to be clear, just do a motion to start, you'll have someone start your Facebook page. Have Robin start your Facebook page.
I made a motion that Robin starts our Facebook page.
How do you feel about starting a Facebook page, Robin?
It doesn't matter what I think.
But it does, cause you have to do the work.
I'm, yeah. I have to
Do you foresee us keeping it updated and-
I'm, I'm pretty good at that kinda stuff.
I'll second it. I think it's a good idea, as long as nobody has a problem with starting it.
All in favor? Let's give it a try.
Who, who seconded it?
Me did.
Okay.
Alright. Auctioning stuff. Ninety-four dump truck? That's the big semi truck, is what that is?
The picture's around the phone, if you wanted to show people what we're doing. Guess I opened all of them.
So there, yeah, there's five pieces of equipment there, I think it was five? Yeah. Uh I think there's surplus. This was an old mower.
Wow. How old is that?
What they mow with that?
Actually, he was, he was using it up until they bought the new one, that looks-
Wow, really?
It's in a little better condition, cause I beefed it up. This one, the three point is broken on it, other than that, it runs.
It does?
It does. It, it's, it's got, I know, it's, it's worn out, but
Can you see it?
But it's surplus, I, I've got one that's newer and running better.
So for auction, I mean, we're actually gonna try to sell it?
Yeah, I mean, and, so just, I've talked to Blue Mule. We've got an auction that's gonna start on Saturday. If I can get all this up into his yard. Minus maybe the galleon. Cause I-
That's a long ride, is it, yeah?
But he would like it in his yard, we could actually start selling it. Starting Saturday. It would end next starts this Saturday and it'd end the next Saturday, I think. Or we could wait and get in the next one, which would be in June.
You know what? He have a poster board or a board?
It's all online.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so can we just post pictures on it instead of trying to-
And that's what, he said the roller where it might be difficult to move. That one, he would probably do that way.
You pick up.
And then anybody that wants to do it will have to come here to, to do it. But the, if the other one's run, he would prefer to have it in his yard.
Wow.
This is the roller.
But that's the galleon roll.
I would not wanna drive that thing.
Would like to see you sit on the dragon?
Yeah.
If it doesn't sell, we get to keep it there, right?
Park it at your house.
It is, and here's the thing about Blue Mule-
You get it, you take it.
It's highest bidder. So if all it gets is fifty bucks, it's fifty bucks.
You can set a reserve as well.
With Blue Mule, I, I don't know, he didn't say anything about a reserve.
Did you want it?
Another auction that does-
Yeah, we could, we could find another-
Do we have a machine to replace it?
No.
This doesn't have a gas tank.
This, technically, this needs- This, it needs a lot of work to, to make it. Uh, the second speed in it is gone, so it's, you're like at two miles an hour. And it's, it is, it is well used, it was it's a nineteen, I think it's a nineteen fifty-six. And originally owned well, I don't know who originally owned it, but it Shelley used it until it was done for and then gave it to us. So that's, that's the role.
So would it need to be replaced?
We would like to replace it with a smaller one at some point. But not right away.
We have bigger fish to fry.
Do we have, do we have titles for these other vehicles?
Uh, the-
Did you make sure?
The mower and the galleon, I don't believe-
Yeah, the mower and the roller, no, I didn't see any, but all these others, yes.
But, yeah, this is the, the sixty-six dump truck. It's actually, it works okay. Brakes are in need of repairs.
And you can't replace tires on these, right? Is that my understanding?
You can, it's expensive to replace them.
We got the Widowmakers, they have some, one has a black little duck, they've got a cage.
Uh, the bed is shot, it's, it's a metal bed over a wood bed. The metal is all rotted away.
You guys do realize that was the garbage truck for basalt?
Yeah.
Doing raretons, where the garbage been here.
Yep. So, yeah, it runs, it drives. It's just getting to that point where it's becoming a liability more than maybe usefulness.
Biggest problem is with that truck is, it's a hazard if you're running that down the road, because it maxes out at forty-five miles an hour.
Yeah. And it's still the original sixty-six bias ply tires.
Are they round and they hold air?
They're kinda round. Let's not call them round, round. This is the little Sonova pickup.
This is one with a hole in it.
This is the Flintstone, the other.
Yeah, this is the one they call-
It's optional, though.
There is a street sign on the driver's side. Keep my foot out of it.
It's a, it's a bedrock truck, but use your feet.
Yeah.
Optional, yep.
It, it runs, it, it does a pretty good job, but I think it's surplus. There's another, on, further on the agenda, there's more to talk about trucks, but this is the big plow truck. That's one of the county trucks. That dump bed actually is just being held there by straps and a chain.
And were you guys given this, or did you guys?
It was given to us from the county. And the bed, I think, came from Idaho Supreme. But there's no actual hydraulics on that bed. There's no hinges, there's no hydraulics. Yeah.
Is that it?
I think that was it. So, yeah, it's too big for, and the, the maintenance on that engine, it's a big cat engine. I've got ten gallons of oil in it and we haven't got up half halfway on the dipstick. And it leaks, just sitting there. I mean it's, it's a maintenance nightmare, that's too big for the city. We could use some smaller. So that's, that's the five things I'm proposing to, to get rid of. And whether we use Blue Mule or another auction site, or if you think, can if it's less than five hundred dollars, we just call it scrap?
Well, so, yeah, but less than five hundred dollars, the American just kinda direct it to maximize their return to the city. But, you know, typically the public auctions, the way they do it. That's obviously fair. I just remember obviously you guys can't buy.
Oh shit.
I don't-
I was eyeballing the Freddie Flintstone truck.
Curtis, Curtis, we can pull a Nancy Pelosi and Diane Feinstein thing. I'll buy it and then I can sell it to you.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if we'll get a lot of money out of it, like I said, I mean if Blue Mule will let us put a reserve on it. I think the, the biggest, that big plow truck it's, it's worth more than any of the rest of it. And I would hate to see it go for five hundred bucks, cause I think that plow on it's probably worth a couple thousand. So I would hope that it would go more, and so maybe if they'll let us put a reserve in, especially on that one.
But you said they don't?
I, he didn't say anything about that, it's just-
I know primetime auctions will.
Yeah, I, I know primetime will. So I can, I can get with other auctions and see if we can't get them in there. I can talk to Blue Mule and see if he does a reserve.
What's the, Blue Mule and primetime, what's their rate?
And I didn't get their percentage, but it-
I know the primetime's pretty high at times.
Yeah.
Well, the next thought is, is do you wanna continue seeing it sit there? If it doesn't sound? I just say, if it was free, just let it go and whoever buys it, buys it.
We could decorate it.
Sell it like on Craigslist? Well, the problem is, cause you gotta get a value then at that point, so if it was under five hundred bucks, yeah, the Americans say maximize it, let's see the best we can. But then you get a lot of time and hassle into it too.
Yeah, anybody that buys this stuff will be required, just come and get it, we don't have to haul it anywhere or do anything like that.
Couldn't we also hold a community auction and then after that?
You can, but like the last, last one the Blackwood did, their leftover garbage trucks, which were for like two hundred bucks a piece, there was nobody there.
Well, that's where we say the minimum.
You know, well, right, but I mean, it's just a, an auction on your own, probably-
Yeah, and little basalt. The one guy interested in the dump truck isn't around right now.
Probably shouldn't be messing with it anyways. He's got bigger fish to fry there.
Could park it in front of his yard and start filling it up.
If the dump truck was repaired on the bed, would it be worth keeping around?
On what?
On the-
For making the dump bed operation.
So, so I thought about that a little bit, because it could be used for the community to like, somebody's cutting a tree down, like, it was just parked, you know, right here, they put all their stuff out, run it down there to burn pile dump it. That wasn't thought, so.
Cause I know-
But then it is-
But it's got tires, it's gotta be replaced. The brakes have issues.
Are you talking about the little one or the big one?
The big, dump truck one.
Oh, big one?
It's, it's, it's more than, more maintenance than what this city wants to deal with.
Or the little one even, I guess.
The little one, yeah, you could put some money into it, I guess we could keep it.
Especially if someone donated their time to build it?
Uh, we can, I, I know how to build a bed, I mean, I, I could build one, I just I don't know, we just, we just bought a dump trailer that will haul every bit that, that will.
That'll hauls what? Maybe yards?
The dump, oh-
The dump truck.
The dump truck, well, the other day I had close to four yards in it.
Four yards?
It was a little scare. It did dump.
Cause I know the, the pump is all but gone on it.
Yeah, the, the cylinder is in pretty bad shape, it did dump it. The trailer will actually hold close to ten thousand pounds. So that's, that'll do everything that the city really needs.
Is there anything that you guys feel like we wouldn't get rid of?
No, I think it all leads to go to auction.
Okay.
Okay.
Make a motion?
Motion to sell.
What are we doing here?
Mr. Motion authorized the mayor to direct it to public auction.
Yep. Make a motion for the mayor to public auction excess equipment.
I second it.
All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
We'll get rid of it. Probably no reserves, just get rid of it. May I ask your report?
Doing good, we're, I, I mentioned last, last month, we're flowing back to the lagoons. The lagoons are looking really good, they've cleared up from the winter. The ice over made them a little septic. Nasty smelling. But the water's cleared up and it's going down, so that's what we wanted to do. Uh, the mayor just helped me, we've flushed the line going down the first. So that's that was septic also. It was nasty, and I didn't realize we had to do that, but when we're done flowing to first, there's a valve to shut off and get blow it out with air. Pushes the last of all that. It's been sitting for two weeks.
You can put your mouth on it and-
No. No.
I don't watch that.
Uh, the yards are looking good, I've been busy mowing. We're getting quotes out for the meters on well three, it's not working. And I think everything else is functioning pretty good. We did get that new trailer, I'm waiting for license plates for it. I built a new hitch for the red truck so we can pull it. It didn't, the bumper pull did not light that trailer. I had to straighten the bumper.
On an empty trailer?
On an empty trailer, yeah. So I'm a little dubious as to whether the hitch is gonna be much better, but
Well, we might have a solution to that problem.
So, but I think things are running pretty good, I got mowers up and going and
And the streetlights look great? Oh, yeah, we got-
Oh, yeah, the streetlights, the streetlights are up, if, if everybody's noticed.
One of my house actually shines now.
They they are a little different.
Yeah, they're kind of a long line set up around. So there are some roads that I noticed, like our side road, thirty-five. You come around the corner and look down the road, it's pretty dark, because they all go the other way.
What was our savings, twelve hundred dollars?
Well, it's supposed to cut our bill like in half.
So, yeah, it seemed like in five years they'll all be paying for it, would we pay five thousand?
Haven't paid anything yet. Even better. I haven't seen a bill.
But they look, they look nicer up there and they'll they'll be cheaper to run.
Okay, city business.
Right, I'm gonna try to make this fast. Okay, I got an email the other day and I've been wondering, because normally in December, I hear from the guy that wrote all those city software. And I got an email that he has been sick and he passed away a couple weeks ago. And I actually had this conversation with him one day, I said, so, is it just you, are your kids taking over your business? And he's like, no, they're smarter than that, so when he goes, there's no updates. There's no, if that computer crashes.
You're back to doing it by hand.
Yeah, so I'm not saying we have to do it right now, we need to be prepared that we're going to have to upgrade and replace that system in the next year or two, I think.
Do you have one in mind?
Nope, I know the last auditor, Teresa was her name, had mentioned one. Uh, she had other cities that use the same system, and they would be in the same boat. Um, so I'll probably ask the current auditor if he has an opinion. So, because a lot of the big software out there that's written for cities is very expensive and way out of our budget. That's why I'm sure Bay Salt went with this guy, he was local, it was inexpensive. It's old school DOS system, but it doesn't do the job.
Do we know what FERC uses?
They just got one, didn't they?
I don't know, actually.
Because I know he didn't have one.
They were doing it all by hand.
Questioning me, what we had. But I I know they've been looking into it.
It's like the Urban Renewal Agency of Blackfoot, they use just a QuickBooks Online.
What I understand though is that they really don't like QuickBooks for cities.
Yeah, because the Urban Renewal is hypnotizing the Blackfords, and that was what they used, because it was cheaper. It wasn't a full visible.
Well, that's true, there are little cities that might deal with what they're using.
I mean, this will keep going as long as the printer and the computer keep going. But I know even to change out the printer, he told me, you'll have to call me so we can make sure that it's programmed to the system. And that's a Windows seven computer, I mean, they've got that, I'm sure when we did the water. So, okay. And let's see. We applied for a grant through Blue Cross, we have a few steps we have to do. So the mayor and I will be attending, there's two meetings in Boise, and then the rest are webinars that we can do. And Laura helped me with the help of her husband, answering all the weird questions and gave me some good BS answers.
What we did is we wrote it to, it was for the health of the community, so we wrote it from the viewpoint of getting a truck. And I focused, so it's very road heavy of how our citizens walk on the roads. So, yeah, we're gonna apply for a five thousand two million, aren't we?
Yeah, I was gonna say that. So that that was twenty thousand, this one, there's another one, five thousand, again through Blue Cross, different little things. Anyways, so we're gonna work on that too. Don't know if we'll get it.
The mayor walks like every day.
Yeah, I think that's part of the Blue Cross, that might be the five thousand one.
Might be the five thousand, I know it.
Yeah, Ford's got the twenty thousand one.
Did it say what we had to do for the five thousand? The twenty thousand one, they want you to, it's very specific that they will do stuff for you. That's why we wrote it, it's a truck we want, I'm making it evident, we want a truck.
Is that for like a sidebar you're talking about, is that what you mean by a track to go around the town?
A truck, sorry.
To help us take care of our roads.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the next item is purchasing a truck. And don't have to have an answer tonight, you can ponder this. We've talked about purchasing a new truck, and we three have been looking at trucks. So, something to think about, how much do we really want to spend? Do we want to buy a new or used truck? And take on whatever we find that way, it might have higher miles, might be good miles, I don't know. Um, or something that we discussed was can the city finance a truck? So I did look into that, I was scared about this. Technically, you have one year that you can finance something in, but I did go talk to the Bank of Commerce. They said they do this for Shelley all the time. So basically, we would say, okay, we want to purchase a truck, we want to pay it off in five years. Is the number we used. Um, so they would finance that truck, and then eleven months, they would give us the payment that we'd pay it off in five years. The twelfth month, there would be a balloon payment that they then finance again for another year to keep us in that. There's no penalties, there's no, like, and we can make bigger payments to it too. Like, if we get the grant, we could put that down. But as I've kind of thought about it, I'm like, you know, a new truck does sound kind of nice, and if we took care of it, kept it nice, kept it maintained, it would last us for a long time, we would know the maintenance history of it. All those things.
So another thing you may want to consider, but so back to, so constitutionally, you can't incur it over one year. And the banks know that, so there's always an out, that's why the one year renewed, one year renewed anyway. But all of the, uh, Shelley, Blackfoot, Bigland County are going to leases. And the way those work is so they have a five-year rotation, and then the bank automatically buys those back for their new rotation. But then that five-year-old truck or vehicle is giving them to the smaller communities, and then they do another lease for the smaller communities. And it may be such that you would get, you know, a five or ten-year-old one.
So where do you find those trucks?
Well, so you'd have to get a hold of the leasing companies that are, so right now Zion's did a bunch of them, and the US Bancorp knew a bunch of them. But if you want to go look into that, as a smaller community, be on the, you know, the back end of a five or a ten-year lease, that may be a better option.
It seems like a lease would just.
Well, so then you would just roll through it every five years. And and that's what those are all going to, because from a cash flow or, you know, from a, from a total cash out standpoint, that's better for them. Um, and like I say, that's kind of the new trend rather than trying to buy it. So it's a small family, you know, these family ones, but they were just another option.
Interesting, it's another option. Um, so you can think that over, what's smart? And I am going to share this because it's not the first time I have encountered it. Bay Salt has a reputation out there for being kind of an old crusty town. And when I went and spoke to the bank, like, he kind of chuckled, like, it's nice to see you here, kind of thing. And he was kind of surprised that somebody from Bay Salt was coming in to ask about purchasing a new vehicle. Just saying, it's not the first time I've I've come across that. Yeah, we have lots of broken down things.
So part of the, part of the truck thing is Brian's been looking, he's, he found, you you find something for like twenty thousand dollars and it's, you know, got a bunch of miles on it, and it's, somebody's, we're we're kind of done with this, we're gonna sell it and update, so. Uh, I kind of started looking a little bit, and I thought, why doesn't the city just finance a new one? And it would have it for twenty, thirty years, whatever, take care of it. The new dump trailer that was just purchased, the current truck that we have, really, I don't know if it really handled that.
I mean, we knew we were gonna be looking at a different truck.
And so, it's a safety thing, it's a reliability thing, it's a lot of those things.
Brian does go to water conferences in Boise, and, I mean, he usually can catch rides, but if there's a time that he can't, need a road-revealing vehicle. You don't want to take the Flintstone truck?
It's more than that, I mean, I, yeah, I'm getting a reputation for being a Fred Flintstone.
You know, or if he goes to other meetings. There, there is a pride to it too. And that's why I shared the bank kind of chuckling, like, it's not the first time that.
So the question was, if if we finance a new truck, where do the funds come from? And so I asked for, where does the funds, where can they come from? Can you explain that?
Yeah, so, um, say if we did this this way for five years, you'd have an eleven hundred dollar payment. Brian's going to be using it for general purchase purpose, water, sewer, running out there, whatever. All three funds can make those payments to help.
So last year, the the previous year, Larry spent, uh, what was it, almost sixty thousand dollars to have this chip seal out here. Part of the use of the truck and the dump trailer is to go get, road patch stuff, bring it in, cut out the roads, start repairing roads, use Brady Anderson to help. And 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 do a lot of it ourselves, and instead of paying out that money to, that we don't have, why don't we just take that money and put it into our own equipment?
And you could also say like, twenty thousand we could take and buy a nice truck. I'm just saying, like, think about.
So a new truck is sixty thousand dollars.
Or more.
That's what a brand new would cost.
That was the old twenty twenty-four model that hasn't sold yet, is sixty thousand.
And you can buy a one with two hundred thousand miles on it for, you know, thirty.
These prices are insane.
They're expensive, and then it's it's like, you see these trucks with piles on them now, that they're selling, they've used for the cities, you know, they got hundred, hundred fifty thousand miles, but it's been well used, so do we want to buy somebody that's used?
Or you thought like, you can go to the older Chevys for five thousand, that somebody's replaced the motor in. I'm just saying, like, what are the consequences of all of these choices?
New and then you got warranty though.
So you buy a new one, you get a three-year warranty, then you buy, extend a warranty on top of that, and that is expired. And and you get six, seven, eight years out of that, but buying a new truck generally, you're in pretty good shape. You don't have to go back and buy the tires, you don't have to go back and.
Are there limitations on the leases that you've seen?
As far as.
Like, you don't like put so many miles on it?
Most of them, you know, it's all cops, I mean, those are all leases now. Obviously, there's no mileage restrictions on those.
We'll look into it.
And our accounts can handle that for five years? Like, easily, or are we gonna be squeaking by, or, because now.
So like this last year budget, um, I had savings built in, maybe less savings would go in. Like, I put in nineteen thousand into savings. That was part of.
Oh, that's right.
How much interest are we?
So you can give me a quote on interest, oh, how much interest are we turning?
So, then you say we're like fifteen thousand dollars a year on the interest.
On general and sewer.
That's a truck.
That we've increased.
Yeah, that's why I forgot we had done that to get that.
So I had an idea also, we just talked about it just before the meeting, is we have a lot of water rights. We're gonna look into selling the water. Leasing it to create a revenue for the city of Bay Salt, because we have, from what I understand, all quite a significant water rights that we don't use, but we can take the water that we don't use and lease it to somebody to generate a revenue for the city of Bay Salt. So we're gonna do that.
So that is instead the base, city of Bay Salt rather than homeowners, or you're talking?
No, it's separate.
But it would help us in our water department?
Yes, it'd be, I I think it'd be significant. I think it's a good idea. So there's an extra revenue sitting there also potentially. So we're gonna look into that.
Okay, and then one of the things that I also, so I'm starting to look at next year's budget, and Brian and I have been talking. Um, and kind of going along with improving Bay Salt, um, coming up with an official logo for Bay Salt. I said we could put a contest out there that has a cash prize. Um, and have our citizens submit their digital logo that we can put on a vehicle or letterheads or whatever.
I like that, that would really engage people, and I think that would be nice.
Put it on a sign.
And we could like pick the favorite ones and have people vote on them maybe? I like that idea.
And winner gets a cash prize of some amount.
It wouldn't have to be super fancy, I mean, I don't fall's dealing with the balls, you know? That that's pretty.
No, I think it's, I think we probably got creative people out there that could do something pretty amazing, I like the idea.
And then the other thing is, does anybody disagree with having an AC? Like one of those Mr. Cool.
That's a good one to get.
I'd love AC, I don't know how much it is.
Could be three thousand.
Yeah, that sounds like a lot, who bid that?
That's a deal.
That's a deal, I just put it in today for fourteen, so.
Yeah, no, I looked up average cost and it did.
It's a cost.
That's good.
Anybody against that?
I'm not opposed to it.
I just, it's hot in here in the summer.
It's really hot here.
I I know you guys are probably like, we're in here like, three months out of the season, but I've been here quite often and it's.
I've been in here, it's really warm in here.
Poke your head up there and see if there's actually much insulation up there sometime.
That's how you, it's like a greenhouse in here.
I took the dead ones out the other day.
Yeah, technically we need a new building, but that's another story for another people.
But that, there is money in building maintenance to cover it, so.
I'm not opposed to it.
Let's move forward.
So there is water and sewer connection fees, I know we've talked about this before. This little resolution, I don't know why it was never numbered, that was not me, but it was never numbered. So two things in it. Thousand dollars to connect to our water, thousand dollars to connect to our sewer. We've talked about pricing. This little survey I got today, this is the new updated one that tells all the cities what they charge for water, connection fees, all of those things. Um, Brian needs to really pin down the cost of it to make sure we're covered.
Main, I wish for them, they, they said they'd call me back.
The other thing that I noticed is in this resolution, you remember we did a new ordinance? But did away with the interest on the security deposit.
And here it is again.
And here it is repeated in here, so do we need to fix that new ordinance, Garrett? And do we word it, like Brian had a good point, you could also say like, it's a thousand dollars, kind of like, I don't know how else to say it, but a privilege to connect into, and then the rest of the expenses on you.
So, back to your first question, so no, because ordinance one thirty, so ordinance is is a law. Resolution is just the setting of the fees, so when we amended your ordinance to take that interest out, that automatically means this reservation. That's the newest ordinance.
I just, I happened to see that when I was looking for the fee costs. So.
But on your, so once you go through the citizen associates thing and decide, you know, where you think you should fall on your costs, I would assume you're gonna be way over five percent, you'll have to do it publicly.
So we do need, that's worse.
And currently, it's a thousand dollars plus the homeowner pays for the cost of the line. But, right, is that the way we've read it?
The homeowner does all the work. So the the thousand dollars for the water, the thousand, is just for the privilege of looking on.
What about like meter?
They have to pay for all of that.
Meter? You put in a water meter?
Assuming that they would have to, you know, pay the cost of having a meter.
Basically, a thousand dollars is just a permit.
And then with one of the sewer issues that happened recently to one of the people in the community, they had a sewer backup, his line was plugged. But his line, because we've talked about how crazy some of these sewer connections are, his line was five hundred feet.
Two hundred, it's two hundred and seventy-two feet.
Away?
That's, that's how, that's how long his sewer line is to attach to the nearest sewer.
So, do we need to also update that maybe there needs to be cleanouts every so often?
State codes could require that, such is probably a line before those codes get into place.
I'm sure it isn't only.
So, on that, can I interject there a minute, what's happened on that? Is that the plumbing code used to cover the five feet up from the house, put your cleanout there. The DEQ said, we got this out on the street and whatever, we come to the property line, and there was this no man's land that was a length of line from just outside the house to the street, and who's, what, which agency had that responsibility? Some years ago, a few years ago, they decided, and now the, uh, the. Some years ago, a few years ago, they decided, and now the, uh, the plumbing inspector, the state plumbing inspector, whatever, has taken that responsibility for that, and like Garrett said, the plumbing code says.
So we don't really need to fix that either?
It doesn't hurt to reinforce it in your code, I mean, or reference the plumbing code or whatever, but the state plumbing inspector now ostensibly does that inspection, and if you have a bend in it, that line anywhere, they gotta have a clean out. If it goes so much distance like Garrett said, then they, the plumbing code says you've gotta have a clean out.
Okay.
So we have several that are way old. They did end up putting a clean out about, about a hundred foot so that it can be cleaned out, but there is this Catherine Nelson's property, it'll be the same thing. It's gonna be like two hundred feet worth of sewer line that they're gonna have to install, so they would.
Are they gonna have to extend the sewer line?
Well, that, we, we've talked about that before, is that the city doesn't.
So that's not the city's responsibility.
It's not our, so it's up to them.
They have road repair on top of that, they have to do all the responsibilities to put it back the way it was before they started.
And they're putting in.
So basically, it's, it's their obligation to put that two hundred feet of sewer line to connect to us.
They've been working on it since.
One of the things I would recommend, I, I can end up with sewers, uh, clean out on distances, whatever state code is, added to has what's called a bullhorn clean out. Now, what that is, that's a double clean out sitting there, so this one goes this way, this one goes the other way, so it's like two hundred feet from the house to the street, you have that in the middle, that way they clean out both directions and it makes it a lot easier.
That's what they did over here.
They put a bullhorn in.
I would imagine that's probably required by state code now.
Some states are way behind that, so I love, you know, just so.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So the, the fee just to connect is a thousand dollars.
Is a thousand dollars, man, that seems excessive.
Uh, actually. We're one of the cheapest ones in the state.
When I was doing construction stuff, it was nowhere near that.
Well, how many years ago was that?
It's been a while.
So like what, chili's like seven thousand?
Ninety seven hundred.
Ninety seven hundred?
They just increased it last week.
Yeah, I know, is that, yeah, thousand dollars, you're just gonna apply a little earlier, a thousand dollars, you're underdoing it. Ultimately, I'm not saying do it now, but when you do your part of facilities planning study, you will justify the P V charge. The three things you do is there's a capacity replacement fee, so it's like, okay, we've used, you know, you came, we have capacity, but capacity costs this much. The second thing we can, we can look at because a component of that fee is the body end fee. System was put in in, you know, nineteen ninety or whatever, so basically amortize all that, you know, pipe toward seventy five years, and then when you come up with the value of that estimated value of that system, like the accounting value and say, we also have to buy into it, cause you didn't pay for this all along and the other people did. The third element of that is the actual physical connection fee, and that's, like what Brian was saying, okay, do, and we sell on the meter, yeah, we wanna sell on the meter, they can put it in, or we can put it in, if we put it in, we're gonna charge a fee to put that in, or we just sell on the meter, they have to buy our meter, cause all the meters are the same type thing, and the same, same pieces apply to the sewer.
That's what you're saying, so we should talk to you.
Connection fee into that. And you wanna incorporate that when you do your facilities planning study, if you're gonna raise it right now, raise it to a, using the, the chart, so you're
Close.
You're close to something you feel good about. And some people may say that's way too much or whatever, but when they did Clifton's, their facilities planning study, it'll kind of like you, right, I mean, and it never says justify it, and this may. Some people don't like this answer, but there are a lot of variables in this calculation. And I can justify mathematically in your study, a connection fee on your water from five thousand to fifteen thousand, where if you add all those elements up, there's interest rate, do, do you give the, do people credit for the, the grant that was put in, or did they not get credit for the grant? The term of the loan, I mean, all those things that go into an amortization calculations is, you know, what, what we feel comfortable with, well, you know, where we want it to be and kind of, the advice I generally provide from local communities is, this is gonna change a little bit now, and Garrett probably has more than, you know, the domestic exemption, I think they passed the legislation on the domestic exemption a while, but the problem in Idaho has always been for, you know, twenty years or more now is that and you're forcing to have plenty of water, that's what a lot of cities know, is that we don't can't give you any water, but you can get approved right in the family, and you can now grow houses instead of hay, and you can, you know, you're half acre, you get water, you're all water, two acres, because that's the zoning and and I like any of these, so, so I'd look at that for water and sewer. The city wants to be the provider, if you're gonna be in, in your city limits and in your impact area, you wanna be the provider, cause you get to manage the growth that way, you get to manage what things look like if you, cause those are the two elements that the people need, you gotta have water and sewer, so if it costs ten grand for an insectic system, I wanna be the connection, the city, I wanna be at eighty five hundred or something like that. I'm a little better deal than if you do it on your own. And the same with the water, what's the well, well, it's gonna cost you twenty four thousand or two thirty two thousand dollars. Well, our connection, I'm not saying the connection fee would be that high, but you wanna be, you wanna say, you know, we want, if you're gonna go next to our city, we want you to connect to our city, so that we can manage to develop. And one of the, one of the incentives is, you know, it's cheaper for the developer to connect in, to have the people connect in the city than have them do it on their own. There's rural, rural developments. Some reason we as the public don't seem to factor in the cost of the septic tank and the well when we look at building in the country, right? The lot cost me fifty, or now it's hundred and twenty thousand for that two acres, and my house is gonna cost me, you know, four hundred thousand or whatever, I look at it. And yeah, I know I gotta put this well in the septic again, and that dang city, you see those impact fees? Maybe a lot they're charging me for that?
A thousand dollars?
See, it's gonna cost me a thousand dollars for that. That well's gonna cost you thirty thousand, right? And somehow people don't make that comparison. Anyway. When we do your facilities planning study, we'll incorporate all the justification in for the fee you end up charging. In the meantime, do an intermediate step.
Okay.
That's our reason for it.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
I don't wanna be advising somebody, should we do? I figured you'd tell me if I wasn't, like, hey, you can do that, it's not legal.
Oh, the other thing I forgot to mention was, we did purchase some signs, some street signs, that we will slowly start working on. Cause I drive around Jir Little Bend, and I'm like, you can't even read that sign, that's six fifty.
It'll take us a little while to get to that corner.
Yeah, but we're gonna slowly start putting some new signs up.
The first ones will be the, the four way stops here, those will be new, and the eight hundred north sign out there on all the side poles.
So they, they give us a better deal if we buy the same number, right?
Yeah.
So we get the same numbers and.
So yeah, you, you buy more than five at a time, then you get a discount, so starting with one number. No, I'll go, I'll go.
It'll take us a while, but it steps.
Only do the ones that we have to, cause when it come, when we, we get the construction money, the next one will lose signs.
Right.
And you'll get.
Well, we're not gonna spend a ton of money on it.
Yeah. Then we do all the signs, you'll get the fifteen thousand.
No, I worked a sign, I wasted every little discount I could out of.
Yeah.
But some of them are really big.
We do the sign grant, with the L tag, we'll get fifteen thousand, we'll do all the signs.
I'm willing to, I, I got another package this week, so I think I'm gonna go down and watch about it.
Stop signs were fifty five bucks a piece, okay, if I bought four.
We didn't do this one yet.
She got one on the wall in bed.
But he's not here.
No.
Oh, you're not college anymore.
So this was brought up last month, the stop sign at eight ten and six seventy five. But here's not here. How would you guys feel if we put in another stop sign on this road?
Which one?
This next intersection down.
Where Hal's.
Oh, by Hal's property on the corner there, between Hal's and Larry?
We have one there.
How would you feel about it?
There used to be one there.
I don't, I don't like the idea.
What do you say now?
I don't like the idea.
I don't either, yeah.
If you put one there, then you're gonna have to put one, I mean, people coming faster this way than that way.
Yeah.
There used to be one there and Secky was constantly calling, cause people ran.
And that was to control people's kid, because people couldn't keep their kids off the street, and I just think.
I just remember everybody hated that one so bad, we took it out.
Yeah. One way or the other, you know, all, or south or all east west, so.
Why don't we just put a speedboat there?
No.
We can't, we can't do speedboats.
Why?
Because the state says we can't.
Brian doesn't wanna do it.
We have to do levees, they're a five foot. Like what they did in front of your dad's place. I was already told about that.
That's wearing down though.
It doesn't want you quiet as mine.
Let's move along. We wanna talk about, we wanna talk about ditches care and maintenance, so we just wanna remind the community that the ditches are the people's responsibility, not the city's unless it goes underneath the street and, you know, other than that. And if you're gonna modify, we, we've had some people recently modify ditches and do stuff and, and you need to talk to your neighbors before you. Daryl is having an issue with water, so you need to talk to Daryl and fix that problem.
It has to be fixed.
We can't get water, cause of that head gating, there's stop, it won't, and the water won't.
Whatever you did over there, you can't get water over there.
The Mitchells weren't getting any water.
So that's a, that's.
And they want it and they can't get to it. And I trust Daryl to know what.
But you're not the only one.
No, you're definitely.
A water level was, is exactly, is going out, but in the gate to stop it, is having problems with the.
So we're not here to talk about the water problems, so that's the ditch problem, that's the neighbor's problem, everybody on the ditch line is responsible for that. Uh, we had a neighbor of us, so I had to go clean our ditch, cause it was backing up, so that's my problem, not the city's problem. So don't call Brian.
Or walk in.
We're willing to help.
Yeah, we are, it's, I think so.
One thing that could really just help is I go up to Jack Mitchell's all the place and in the canal, they just have a rope that hangs down in the canal to catch a bunch of the debris, that's a simple solution to keep the debris from going under, cause we've had a plug it, clog at our house, and we, and Daryl had to get out and take a log or something and clean it out. So that, or get something that'll just catch the debris as it comes in, cause every spring, it, there's gonna be a ton of debris. I cleaned out stuff the other day, some, some kid's balls, a ton of them come down.
Snake rivers, I put a screen up.
Cleaned them out.
So I, I, I pulled out fence pickets.
Yeah, I'm not surprised. People don't think about it and, yeah, and it's like the mayor said, it's all on us, and we need to talk to our neighbors and be good stewards of the water.
So something that might be kind of nice is a Facebook page again, just to remind everybody in the spring, hey, it's time to clean up your ditch, bring your weeds. Make sure stuff's out of there, be considerate of your people down the road there, so.
And I just wanna point out that I think some of this has arisen because Guy's not here.
Yeah.
Guy used both sides of this town, the ditches, and so he did a lot of everybody's work, believe it or not.
He did.
He was out there cleaning everybody's ditches.
He did it all the time.
So Guy's not here to clean everybody's ditches out, so.
That's true.
And so.
Kyle's not here.
Kyle's not here.
Yeah, we still have a dog problem, I'm just bringing it up, cause I told people I would bring it up. It's, some people's dogs in town keep running loose and getting into other people's yards. And that's something we need to keep reminding people, cause we're getting a lot of complaints on that. And, yeah.
Hey, that's gotta go.
Animal control was in town the other day.
Well, I told this person I would bring it up and I found out tonight, the dog did it again, so I'm.
Well, you have to call dispatch.
Bringing it up, cause I told him I would bring it up.
So in case you, people here don't.
He wants to deal with them.
Well, they, animal control officer now.
You what?
We have another animal control officer.
So there's a new, there's, she or he?
She.
Was in town yesterday.
There's all she, she over the whole county.
Okay.
So one more thing, I just thought I'd mention real quick, Kit Snacks and kicked a cannon, he died. And he did overdose and drive thinking. So I called his mom, I got her phone number, they're dealing with the property and I uh, offered to put together a group of people for a community service to clean up the property if she, if she asks. So I'm prepared to go help clean up and move stuff and we got a group of volunteers, that's why I like the Facebook page also, is to say, hey, people need help down the road, let's get together and help make this happen, and so. Anyways, this is.
His daughter okay? Is his daughter okay?
I don't think she lives there.
She doesn't, but I'm just, you know, she's pretty young still.
Oh, I thought, he said she was like eighteen now.
Yeah, but it's not that old to be losing a parent.
True.
I mean, even if he's not the best parent.
All right.
Okay, I think that's it.
All right, is the county still gonna come in and spray that noxious poison?
No clue. I don't know. Catch them when they come by.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's.
I think so.
I guarantee it.
They come through, they spray, they kill all the mosquito hawks which killed mosquitoes, they kill the dragonflies which killed mosquitoes. They killed praying mantis, and they leave a film on the food that people were growing.
Uh, they haven't killed my praying mantises yet, and I have a healthy supply. And you're gonna have to fight the county on that, because the county came together.
It's a contract that they have.
It's a contract. You're gonna get, you're gonna have a big fight on your hands for that one.
This is the mosquito.
Yeah.
Yeah, people would prefer to wash the vegetables.
Well, thing is, they wash the vegetables, doesn't do anything, cause once it's on the vegetables, it's in the vegetables.
Okay, so do you need to say anything? No, okay.
You just can't bring your. No, just.
No?
Come see what's going on.
Okay.
I motion to, I can't remember. Thank you, my, my brain went completely blank, I motion to adjourn.
I second it.
On paper. Okay, thanks.